The school board meeting will begin in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in two minutes. The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening and welcome to the March 25th, 2025, meeting of the Marion County School Board. It is called to order at 5:31 PM. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Reverend Cummings, would you please read the board commitment statement?
Yes ma'am. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We'll always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operations of the Marion County School System and/or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1. Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Adriales Diaz, Westport High School. Khalil Lawson, Lakewood High School.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Dr. Gullett, who will share the inspiration and pledge for us this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Great to see you tonight. Pleased to have Dr. Brewer come forward, and we are going to be recognizing amazing students from the Flight Academy, and so outstanding students coming forward now.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Conrad, Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I have the pleasure of introducing Cadet Cullen Briggs from Forest High School. He is representing his Flight Academy this evening, as so many other students have other commitments with athletics taking place and other activities tonight. So he is being brave and representing everyone. I want to share just a couple of statements, and then I'm going to turn it over to Cadet Cullen Briggs for him to share more, and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Flight Academy is an Air Force-sponsored summertime flight training program designed for high school junior ROTC students. These students have a very selective process. The application includes a physical fitness test score, a standing, a high standing in the JROTC program, a comprehensive aviation-focused online test, and an FAA medical examination. The process is extremely competitive, and to earn a slot in the program is a true amazing accomplishment. So at this time, I'd like you to meet Cullen Briggs.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Gullett, members of the board, and distinguished guests. My name is Cullen Briggs, and I am honored to stand before you this evening to present our four cadets from Forest High School Air Force JROTC program, who were selected to go to the Air Force's Flight Academy program. Flight Academy is a summertime program sponsored by the Air Force, to where we will be receiving our private pilot's license across schools from around the country, with just 250 ROTC cadets. We will be culminating in a private pilot's license. Since 2018, Forest's ROTC program has sent sixteen cadets, and will make it twenty. We're incredibly proud to be representing our JROTC unit, Forest High School, and the future of aviation. I stand before you not only to share our accomplishments, but to also express our deep gratitude. This opportunity would not have been possible without the unwavering support of our parents, school district, teachers, and of course, the commitment of the board in expanding student opportunities. We hope that our journey serves as inspiration across the district, whether students hope to achieve an education in engineering, flying, teaching, and leadership. We want them to know that dedication, and with the right support, anything is possible. We thank you for believing in us and investing in our future. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Will you hold on just a second so we can run down and get a picture with you? Dr. Gullett, I understand we have one recognition this evening.
We have a recognition, Madam Chair, but I also want to provide an introduction, if I may, of our student, school board representatives. So if I may for just a moment, I'd like to welcome back Ms. Diaz, who's been with us before. We're glad to have you back tonight. And if you remember, that Ms. Diaz is from Westport High School and is involved in dual enrollment program and biomedical major and a number of other clubs. So we're just really glad to have you back here. Thank you. And I'm pleased to introduce Khalil Alawson, who is representing Lakewood High School. Khalil is graduating this year. He is a senior, and he is very involved with Student Television Network, of which he is now president, I understand. Is that true? He's now president, very seriously taking that leadership role, and we appreciate your leadership. And you also have played multiple sports, including wrestling, baseball, football, and track. That's very impressive. And we understand that you're in the ACE program, and very excited about your leadership and your future, and thank you for being here.
For having me.
So, Madam Chair, I may go forward and introduce our recognition officially with winners from the Southeastern Youth Fair, which is such a beloved activity in our community, and we have some very, very special guests that are going to be introduced by Ms. Adi. And I want to thank Ms. Adi publicly for all of the work you do behind the scenes. We have thousands of people that are involved in this youth fair, and so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, and Superintendent Gullett. As she just said, we just wrapped up the Southeastern Youth Fair right before spring break, and it was very exciting. We have over 1,000 public school students that have entries in the Southeastern Youth Fair. So tonight, I have some very special guests for you guys. I have some of our small animal winners from the Southeastern Youth Fair, so I'll introduce them to you and let them come down. First, from Donellen High School, we have Erica Estrada and her chicken, Fuego. Erica and Fuego won first place in chicken showmanship and second in the skillathon. Next, from Bellevue Middle, we have Lauren Lewis and her chicken, Lulu. They won third place in their record book at the youth fair. And from Osceola Middle School, we have Quinn Jarvis and her rabbit, Olive, and she won first place in the rabbit poster contest. So congratulations to all of these students. We do have a goat that got a little lost on the way here, so they may walk in at some point. But congratulations to these students and everyone who participated in the Southeastern Youth Fair.
Okay, I have to say, those are the best behaved Southeastern Youth Fair animals I've ever seen, because when you go through the barn, that had the chickens and the, it is a crazy place. So really excited that you all were able to join us this evening. I know that being a part of the Southeastern Youth Fair is a big commitment, that you have your schoolwork, other activities, on top of what you have to do year-round to be a part of the Southeastern Youth Fair. So we're very grateful that you took the time, and your parents, your family too, I'm sure, for coming this evening, bringing your animals, and we would love to come down and get a quick picture with you. Okay? All right. That might be the most fun we've had at a board meeting since I've been on the board, so that was super great. Thank you for that. As we move on, we graciously acknowledge the following donations made to benefit our schools, students, and staff members, including eight laptops valued at $4,000 to Reddick Collier Elementary from Coca-Cola to be used for staff and student utilization, scorer's table valued at $4,000 to Donellen Middle School from Bird Insurance Group to be used for all the athletic events at Donellen Middle School, $1,000 to Donellen High School from Donellen Community Thrift Shop to help offset the costs of the robotic competition, $1,000 to North Marion High School from the Ocala Preserve Veterans Corporation to support the North Marion High School JR Junior ROTC program. And so we thank you all for the donations, all the involvement we have from our community that supports all these extra activities in our schools. Dr. Gullett, I'll turn it over to you for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the March 25th, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-19.1, D-19.2, D-19.3, D-19.4, D-19.5, D-19.6, and D-19.7 that have been placed under discussion, regular agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve?
All right. All right. Thank you, Ms. Thrower. A second from Dr. Campbell. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2025, Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 25th, 2025, school board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Could you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting?
Notice for the March 25th, 2025, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on March 14th, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Can you explain the rules for governing for those who wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table on the lobby, in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on that table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. Speakers, please monitor your time. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district, and thank you for your attention to this board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have six speakers.
I'm sorry, could you say that?
Six speakers.
Six speakers. Okay, thank you. Board, with that, I'd like to go ahead and stick with our five-minute time limit.
James Elmore?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to bring up an issue I spoke to you about over a year ago. Before I do that, though, I want to tell you, I'm a teacher of more than twenty years here in Marion County Public School System. I've taught in some of our roughest schools. I'm rated highly effective. I have been nominated for Teacher of the Year and Rookie Teacher of the Year more than ten times. I'm not telling you that to brag on myself. I'm telling you that because I'm hoping you're going to listen to me this time, since you didn't listen to me last time. When I came to you over a year ago, I came to speak to you about an issue that is causing our children to be abused at home. We continue to send our report cards home on Thursdays and Fridays, and I told you last time I was here, statistics have shown that child abuse goes up at a rate of four times when report cards go home on weekends. Since then, I've done a little bit of digging. I've found out that Marion has 788.2 abuse cases per 100,000 children aged five to 11, and our statewide average is 539.9. That means we beat the state average every single year, and we are twentieth out of sixty-seven counties in Florida for rates of child abuse. Okay? So, at this point, I don't have any other conclusion to draw, other than the fact that this board doesn't seem to care about the welfare of our kids. Changing the day we send our report cards home will not cost the school district one single cent. It won't cost you any money. There is zero reason to be sending report cards home on the weekends when our kids are getting abused for it. So unless somebody up here can give me a reason, we need to stop doing that. Right? And if my statements upset you, then please prove me wrong and change it. This is a simple fix. Let's stop having our kids be abused over report cards, please. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Jean DeRouge?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Jeanne DeRouge. That is D-E-R-R-O-U-G-H, and I'm proud to speak on behalf of a teacher tonight, Josh Wheel. He's a candidate for Florida's Congress Congressional District 6 to go to DC, and this matters very much to him what I'm about to speak about. I'm here to tell you about Fessenden Academy. There are a lot of people who would point out that that academy is actually in District 3, and it's really not our business. But we were contacted by constituents of District 6 who are very concerned. They're graduates of that historic academy. They're people that work there now, and they're people who have always taken great pride in this academy existing in the city of Ocala. Those people matter to us, and they certainly should matter to all of you as well. That school was founded in 1868. It was the Union School then. Later, it became the Fessenden Academy, and now it's Fessenden Elementary. But no matter how much that name has changed, the spirit of that school has not. In 1994, it became a nationally-registered historic place, and it should be protected because of that. That's 150 years of history. That's 150 years of representing access to education for every child and every student. That should be important to the people of the school board. And that location is important as well. There are families that walk their children to school because they don't have extra cars. It's becoming harder and harder to afford to have multiple cars in one family right now. And when you send those children by bus somewhere much further away, you are disconnecting their families from taking part in their education, because they won't be able to go there anymore. Right now, Marion County has a great opportunity to show the entire nation that they care about this community and about that population, that they care about the history that that school represents. So I hope that you show the whole entire nation how much you care, because the nation is going to be watching this. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Reverend Leroy Chandler?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for, my name is Reverend Leroy S. Chandler, C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R. I too am here to speak on the continuation of Fessenden School. The first issue I will bring to attention is the Marion County Public Schools Community Engagement Meeting Letter, which I understand was received at our schools on Monday afternoon, but not early enough really to get to the parents until today. These meetings are going to take place on Wednesday, March 26, and on Thursday, March 27. Now, there's very little time for then the community, the parents, the students, and the teachers to come together and collect their thoughts, their ideas, which they would like to present at this meeting. And when we're talking about transparency, we certainly want to have the amount of time given to those of concern. I know that there are other meetings that's going to take place- I know that there are other meetings that's going to take place, and that is good, but I would say to you that these meetings that are scheduled for March the twenty-sixth and March the twenty-seventh are really meetings that are really too soon for those that are concerned to be able to collectively bring their thoughts together, to be able to bring them to the meetings that are now scheduled. And I would ask the board if they would consider truly looking at this situation. Now, also, the students were out of school and only returned, my understanding, on Monday. Would have been, I think, quite good had this letter gone out before the time that the students were out, so that the parents would have had additional time to talk about these things, talk with each other, talk to teachers, talk to the community about it. And then, when they come back, they would have had ample time then to come to these meetings, having their thoughts together. Second thing I want to talk about, but it's also including Fessenden. There is an old African proverb that says, "When elephants fight, it is the grass that suffers." In a sense, the grass represents our children when caught in the middle of a war or battle. We can see this more clearly in the eyes and faces of children in countries where two nations decide to go to war with each other. These decisions are made by people who sit behind desks and in chairs, just as you're sitting right now. I have, and perhaps you have yourself, heard the voices of these children say, "I just want to be free and safe and play as other children." Children need a safe, a stable, and wholesome environment where they can feel free to learn, play, and grow. For over one hundred and fifty-seven years, Fessenden has been the educational facility that has provided these attributes for both its students and its teachers.
Reverend, you have one minute remaining.
The parents, the teachers, and the community, while you may feel justified in actions to discontinue this great school, if it has provided all of these things. If it has not, then please tell us. And if it has, then question yourselves on why are we looking to close it? Finally, we would request that before you place a vote to close this great institution, that you would take a look into the mirror, but not this mirror, not a mirror like this that only reflects physical attributes and expressions. We ask that you would look into this mirror, this mirror, that reflects and exposes the true thoughts and the intents of the heart. This is the only time when truth, justice, and righteousness can come forth. And this, we request, we make this especially on behalf of our children and our community. I thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Chandler.
Sandra Henderson?
Good evening. My name is Sandra Brown Henderson. I say Brown because that's what most of the people behind me know me. And I'm not a graduate of Fessenden. I was forced to go to North Marion High School. And I can tell you some horror stories on that one, but I'll save that for another day. I'm here to support Fessenden's belief that it should still exist. It's a viable, working school. And my research shows me that if you're going to close a school, usually there's a closure committee composed of community people, teachers, students, alumni, whatever, in order to discuss why this was necessary. Usually, you use things like low test scores, old and unsafe conditions endangering health and safety of the staff and students, and plain old shortfalls in the budget. Actually, I haven't been able to find any proof that there are any, none of these things are true. I should back up and say, I have over thirty years of experience in education. I have been a school counselor from elementary schools on the east side of Gainesville up through dual enrollment, so congratulations, Miss Dual Enrollment, okay? And I've seen all kinds of kids. I've had kids walk right out of dual enrollment at Santa Fe College into the University of Florida's engineering program. So we didn't play. And if, if Fessenden is not meeting the criteria of low test scores, unsafe conditions, whatever, then what's really the reason why it's being closed? I tried to, to attack this from a logical perspective, but I, it doesn't make any sense to me. And I want it to make sense. I want to believe that the reason stated is the reason why it's being closed. Now, what, we had a few questions, and we looked at things like, why is Fessenden being targeted? And I hate using the word targeted. I was an old EEO officer at one point, and, and I don't like using things like a sacrificial and lamb. I, I don't like using those words because they're kind of negative. And I don't want to walk away from my home county thinking, wow, that, that really wasn't very fair. I've always been an advocate of students, and my thoughts are, what's going to happen to these kids? I know what happened to me. When you go from a, a home, a school, a, you know, away from home, and, and you go to a different place where nobody knows your name, and you're placed from an honor class into a class where there was a twelfth grader in there repeating English ten, and I thought, I have gone straight to hell. Did I dare go home and tell my mom and daddy? No. My mama was as short as me, but she was fiery, and she would have been mad. But I am honored to say, everything I learned at Fessenden, which was be patient and wait on time, I learned that effectively. It has gained me opportunities that I can't tell you about, but I can say that it, it grieves me that this precious school, this gym, this light on the hill, is going to be extinguished. And many of us are grieving, but we're not talking about the history, we're talking about the future of these students and what it's going to be like when they go to a school where nobody knows your name.
Ms. Henderson, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, sir. Finally, if you're talking about money, what about the half-cent tax, sales tax, that was allocated? I read someplace, and I'm sure this is an exaggeration, that you're going to get three hundred million dollars. And you put down specific goals for that money. It's not going to be earmarked for, for other things, but things like this case, if, if that's the question you have about Fessenden. So, in short, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am not a public speaker, but I felt like I had to say these things. We want to know, what was the data, data used to make this decision? Who made it? When will you make a decision? Because it shouldn't be like the sword of dormicles hanging over our heads, okay? And this shouldn't come up time and time again. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Erica DeLa Cruz?
Hello, my name's Erica DeLa Cruz, last name D-E space L-A space C-R-U-Z. I don't have a speech prepared. I mostly wanted to ask a question. With everything going on right now in the government and the dissolution of the Department of Education, what is that going to look like, and how is that going to affect our kids, specifically those who are on individualized learning plans, et cetera? That, that's it, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mikkel James?
Good evening, Board. My name is Mikkel, Pastor Mikkel, M-I-K-E-L, James, J-A-M-E-S. Good evening, distinguished Board members, Dr. Gullett, Chair Conrad. I stand before you as a pastor in this community, but not only as a pastor, but a pastor who represents individuals who go to my church that goes to Fessenden Elementary School, students, parents, and staff members. And I come today with a deep concern about the manner in which the information regarding a community meeting regarding the Northside Schools was communicated, and tonight I feel compelled to express the frustration and the concern regarding that meeting. I understand that some communication was sent out on March fourteenth to students and their families. If we look at the calendar, we understand that March fourteenth was the day that they went on spring break, giving families no really time to really process the information or the school staff to make sure that the families got that information. Furthermore, I checked the district's website just before I came, and to my surprise, I found no immediate mention of the upcoming community meeting regarding Fessenden, Anthony, or the Northside Schools. Instead, the website highlighted upcoming events such as the early release on tomorrow, a family-focused event that's going to be held at Bellevue in the school holiday, which is scheduled for April eighteenth. The absence of the information concerning a community meeting from a place where the community should be able to go get it is quite frustrating and alarming. Furthermore, what I find to be a little more perplexing is the fact of where this meeting is located. We did not select Fessenden or Anthony, the schools in which are affected, but we decided to go to North Marion Middle and North Marion High School, trying to make that make sense. So, if we really want to have community input, and we have it on two different days, shouldn't those meetings be held at the respective campuses? Just asking a question. Lastly, what I would like to bring up and have the board to consider, our district's mission is helping every student succeed. However, at some point, we must pause and think not just about the students that make up this district, about the faculty and staff that helps make sure that they actually succeed. How do we think they feel about the idea that their place of employment might be closing? Yeah, I understand, we got two new schools opening up on the other side of town, and easily they could be transferred or sent over there, but think about the insecurity that provides for their family, how they have to rework plans for their family to get to and from work, how they would have to pick up their children or establish other plans. Board, I, I just want us to pause for a moment and think about every person that's affected by this issue, and not just our own individual ideas or plans that we may have. We're not looking back, but we are going forward, and I just want you to pause and think about these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
No more members?
Okay, all right. Thank you to all of our speakers who came forward this morning. Board, we're going to read on, move on to item nine-point-one. Recently, the Facilities Procurement Review Committee developed the Construction Management Services Request for Qualifications Selection Process Procedures. Based on that manual, the Design Service Request for Qualification Selection Process Manual was updated. The Design Services Manual mirrors the Construction Management Services with only minor modifications that had to be incorporated to comply with the requirements of Florida Statutes two-eight-seven-point-zero-five-five. Additionally, clarification was added when meetings will be open to the public and when they will be recorded based on Florida Statute two-eight-six-point-zero-one-three-three. These procedures will allow the Facilities Department to proceed with the selection process of design services as outlined in these procedures. The Design Services Request for Qualification Selection Process Procedures can be located on the Facilities Department webpage. The construction of the new central warehouse at the Phoenix Center requires perpetual non-exclusive easement between the School Board of Marion County, Florida, and the City of Ocala. This easement is necessary to allow the power company to have access to the newly-installed transformer that serves the new warehouse. It guarantees the required access for the power company to the easement area for installation, repair, and maintenance purposes. The construction company of the new gymnasium of Osceola Middle School requires a perpetual non-exclusive easement between the School Board of Marion County, Florida, and the City of Ocala. This easement is necessary to allow the power company to have access to install a new transformer that serves the new gymnasium. It guarantees the required access for the power company to the easement area for installation, repair, and maintenance purposes. Board, this concludes our information items for today. We're now going to move on to our agenda items. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-eleven-point-one through C-sixteen-point-one, with the exception of items D-nineteen-point-one, D-nineteen-point-two, D-nineteen-point-three, D-nineteen-point-four, D-nineteen-point-five, D-nineteen-point-six, and D-nineteen-point-seven that have been placed under discussion, regular agenda items. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower, and thank you, Reverend Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board, that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. two-five-dash-one-nine-nine, J.D. two-five-dash-two-zero-eight, J.D. two-five-two-zero-dash-two-zero-nine, J.D. two-five-dash-two-ten, J.D. two-five-dash-two-fourteen, J.D. two-five-dash-two-twenty, J.D. two-five-dash-two-twenty-one, J.D. twenty-five-dash-two-two-four, J.D. twenty-five-dash-two-two-five, J.D. twenty-five-dash-two-two-six, J.D. twenty-five-dash-two-two-seven, and J.D. two-five-dash-two-two-eight for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year and the first, second, and third quarters of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. May I have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students? J.D. two-five-dash-two-zero-one, J.D. two-five-dash-two-zero-two, J.D. two-five-dash-two-zero-four-E, J.D. two-five-dash-two-one-six, J.D. two-five-dash-two-one-eight, J.D. two-five-dash-two-one-nine, J.D. two-five-dash-two-two-two-E, J.D. two-five-dash-two-two-three-E with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year and the first, second, and third quarters of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to Agreement with E.S.S. Southeast LLC?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You are very familiar with E.S.S. Is, is the service that we provide to get substitute teachers in our classroom. This would be the Fourth Amendment at a cost of eight-point-five million. And Mr. Carlisle is here from Human Resources to share some more with the board tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Board members. Superintendent Dr. Gullett. We're pleased to request renewal of the district's contract with ESS Southeast LLC for the 25-26 school year, in addition to requesting additional funding for the 24-25 school year. Request for additional funding for this school year will ensure that we are able to utilize our substitutes to cover absences and vacancies for the remainder of the school year, fourth quarter. To that end, we're requesting an additional $2 million, which would increase our total annual cost for this school year to $6 million. This additional funding request is largely due to the success of ESS in filling teacher absences and vacancies. To date, ESS's fill rate for absences is 86%, which is a 6% increase over this time last year. This increase is notable due to the 13% increase in demand for substitutes and the fact that ESS has filled 5,172 more assignments than this time last year. We believe this increase in fill rate is due to the efforts of our dedicated ESS team in more than doubling our substitute pool. Speaking of our ESS team, they provide daily support to our schools and our substitutes by making regular campus visits to provide onsite and hands-on assistance and support. Our ESS team has also made a commitment to being a part of our school communities. They attend our family-focused events, they attend school-based events, and also our career fairs. Hard work of our ESS team has been noticed by our school sites, where 75% of them have rated them an A on the last report card. For me, it's been a pleasure working with both our local ESS team and the corporate regional leadership. In addition to the funding request for this year, we're requesting renewal of the district contract for the 25-26 school year. You'll see that our funding request for 25-26 will increase to $6.5 million. This is due to an increase in our daily sub-rate and also the addition of a hard-to-fill rate. First, we'd like to increase the daily sub-rate by $3 for a full day, $1.50 for a half-day, and $8 for our long-term continuous substitutes. Last time we increased our daily rates for substitutes was during the 22-23 school year. We believe this will assist in attracting quality candidates and also retaining our substitute workforce. We're also requesting the addition of a hard-to-fill rate to be utilized to add up to 10 of our schools each year. Although we've seen a substantial increase in our overall fill rate, we do still have schools that find it difficult to fill their vacancies. This hard-to-fill rate would be $15 more than our regular daily rate for our daily subs and $5 more for our long-term continuous subs. ESS has utilized this hard-to-fill rate in several of the districts that they work with, and it has been a game-changer. We're confident that the hard-to-fill rate will have the same impact here in Marion County. We look forward to continuing to work with ESS during the 25-26 school year, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. I appreciate the update, and I just want to say, all the decisions that we make every time we're together, this decision to add ESS, I hear positive things about every time I step into a school. So, thank you for bringing that presentation forward. And Board, are there any questions or concerns?
Just one quick question. Can you clarify, you said some numbers, but can you clarify, is that an hourly, $3 an hour, or is that $3 a day?
Per day.
Per day. So, the rate will now be $120 is what I see?
Correct.
And it's $117 right now?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, do we really think $3 a day, is that significant? I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny, but I mean, I really thought you were saying per hour, like $3 an hour, okay, well, at eight hours, I mean, we were talking a little bit of chump change, but like, $3?
We do think it'll be significant.
All right. I can't wait to see it. All right. That's all I had.
Board Member Thrower.
Thank you, and I had a similar question in my mind, and my expectation would be is that we're looking at the going rate, you know, for similar, like-sized districts and needs. Lisa, I hope that's the case, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Still seems extraordinarily low for what they do. Of course, I'm incredibly grateful for that, but also a little sad at the same time that we're in the position that we're in, which is not unlike, you know, across the country. So, it would be my hope, prayer, and expectation that we continue to look for the root causes of why so many teachers are needing so many mental health days and FMLA days and other kinds of days, and continue to do everything that we've been doing and even more to elevate their work and reduce their workload as best that we can, and just work together to continue to try to solve this teacher shortage. The good news is, we have two student board members sitting up here, and I've been hearing rumblings in high school and from other student board members that there, some of them are really starting to think about teaching, which is new. So, hopefully, we'll come full circle and we'll get ourselves out of this. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. All right. Thank you, Board. All those in favor, let's see. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. May I have a motion to utilize TIPS Contract 230301 for furniture, furnishings, and services? May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you have information to share with us regarding this item?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ms. Boombach is forward at the podium. The request for this item is at a cost of $550,000 that will allow us to purchase furniture and other services for not only our new elementary schools, W and X that are being built right now, but also Liberty Middle School Wing. So, Ms. Boombach has some additional details. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Conrad, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. This is actually one of the exciting parts of my job, when we come together after a school is planned or an addition is planned, and we see it come, you know, in the final stages, and we finally pick the furniture, and we can see the students actually utilize the spaces we have designed for them. And it was really fun to meet on a brand-new school and look in every single area and look at the furniture that is needed. I had help from three elementary school principals, and I really appreciate their input. It was really fun to see how they utilize and how the kids will utilize and how teaching has changed over the years and what the needs is for the furniture. We have put together the furniture package for both elementary schools and Liberty Middle School Wing, and with help of purchasing, we have found piggyback contracts we can use to maximize our savings. This is for the TIPS contract, and it's just part of some of the furniture. It had to be split up. This is $550,000, and the next item on there, if I can go ahead, is $2.5 million on the State of Florida contract. And all of this includes, at Liberty Middle School, we have 16 classrooms. We are adding four offices, four teacher planning rooms. There, we're matching the existing school's furniture so they have flexibility if they have to move things around. At School W and School X, it starts from the pre-K kindergarten regular classrooms. We went through the art and music classrooms, the stage, the cafeteria furniture, and then going into the admin areas, the resource rooms, the library, the clinic, even the conference rooms. Also, there, we're providing soft seating for the little kids on the floors. That will be really fun for them. Also, the teachers will get a podium to be in front of the class. They can stand. They have a chair there if they need to sit. And then we have two color schemes too, so each school, they did not look alike. They have their distinct colors. And we're also hoping to have the logos maybe finalized before we order or finalize the cafeteria tables, and we can have some fun putting them on there as well, some branding for the kids in there. That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Boombach. Board, are there any questions or concerns? Nope. Okay, seeing none. We're looking at, our first vote is for the TIPS Contract 230301. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expenditure-increased request State of Florida alternate contract, sorry, 561200-24-NY-ACS for furniture, all types. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Since we've already talked about that, any questions?
Just can you clarify, the funding source for the X-W and Liberty are all from the loan that we took for this furniture?
That is correct. If, there is some capital funds we have set aside in case we need it, but I think we can accomplish it all in the loan.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment Piggyback Agreement with Miller Electric Company?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett, would you like to provide some more information on this item?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Board. Mr. Ben Vinuti is going to come forward to talk about this item, and it really coexists between technology and safety, but as part of our safety plan, as you know, we are purchasing access control items, and this request at a cost of $600,000 would allow us to provide, to purchase some hardware. So, Mr. Ben Vinuti will provide some additional details. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, Board Chair Conrad, Superintendent Gullett, and Board members. The Safe Schools Department is requesting an amendment to the current piggyback agreement with Miller Electric Company. This amendment will increase the spending amount from $200,000 to $800,000. This will allow the Safe Schools Department to begin to address control features to selected school sites within the district. Access control will provide secure and controlled access to our buildings and other specific areas, ensuring that only authorized personnel can access specific locations. This is, this is our start, so we're excited.
All right. Board, any questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinuti. May I have a motion to approve Professional Services Selection Recommendation for Construction Management Services for New Middle School DD Project 24-130?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, I believe you have some information regarding this item?
Yes, thank you. Actually, and Ms. Usher is here, and she's going to share some information and perhaps with Ms. Boombach about the recommendation for the construction management for School DD. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board members. I'm Angela Usher from Operations. The agenda item, as Dr. Gullett mentioned, is to approve Skanska USA as the construction manager for the new middle school DD. This is the Lake Ware Middle Replacement. To provide some background, on February 19th, there was a selection process for the shortlist, the shortlist vendors or whatever firms, and Skanska, out of the first, the four firms, received the highest. But there was a concern about whether it should have been recorded or not. So, on March 3rd, the process was repeated, and it was recorded, and again, Skanska received the highest number, and therefore, the item is before you. Just a little bit of update on the project. We did an environmental study, and there are gopher tortoises on the site, so we're relocating them. It also showed that we have sand skinks. We applied for a permit to move those, and as a result of that, we had to apply for archaeological permit. These permits, we're hoping, will run concurrently, but it could delay the start of construction, but we're hoping that we can work around this and start maybe site work and do different things around while we remove the, we don't have to remove the skinks, we just have to mitigate it and pay to provide more habitat for them. It is really important that this project moves forward. We're trying to keep it close as possible to schedule. As you know, with additional tariff and with inflation, the cost of construction is escalating, so I would really appreciate us moving on as quickly as possible so that we can still build the school and have the funds that have been allotted to it and use it for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Usher, thank you for presenting. I do, I do have a statement prepared that I want to say, and I just, I know you're new, and you're replacing another staff member, so I don't want you to feel that this is directly, you know, directed at you specifically. I also want to share that I didn't take it lightly composing this statement, but at this point, where we are and in the construction process, I feel that we should be doing a better job. At this time, I'm going to be voting in favor of this agenda item despite the district's failure to adhere to our established procedures. My decision is based solely on the direct impact this item has on our students here in Marion County. Given the recent updates to the procurement process, I expected the procurement for the new middle school to proceed smoothly. However, I was disappointed. I was disappointed to learn that the state statutes were not followed, therefore having to restart the process. This is deeply concerning. As a board member, I was not informed that interviews were taking place, and nor was the legal department. Without transparency and communication regarding the project timeline, how can the Board stay properly informed about the initiation of the cone of silence? This issue was discussed extensively following the last procurement, leading to the formation of a committee and the hiring of a consultant to ensure that we were in compliance. Despite these measures, the same mistakes have been repeated. This calls for question in the effectiveness of the safeguards and their intentions. Additionally, during my most recent agenda review, critical information regarding the middle school project was not disclosed. It appears that the contract was going to be brought before the Board without disclosing there is approximately a 10-month delay because of environmental challenges. The continued lack of transparency and ineffective communication regarding construction projects is, in my opinion, unacceptable. Moving forward, I expect the Facilities Department to uphold the highest level of standards so that we are in compliance with state statutes and established procedures. We must do better. Our community and our children are counting on it. Thank you. And with that, I'll open it up to Board comments. Dr. James?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Usher. You're new to us, and so you're coming, coming in. We have touched base about that and stepping into some major projects. So, Ms. Chair Conrad painted a pretty, a pretty clear picture there, but I think my primary disappointment is that we spent a lot of time as a community restructuring our procurement processes, and in a recent past, we even had the new procurement manual for design on a board agenda, and Ms. Boombach and I discussed that that needed to be removed because this was very timely after we were having to redo the interviews due to failure to follow state statute. And so, we also failed to follow another piece of our procurement manual that we created, which was that it clearly outlines that the facilitator is someone from our procurement department. It doesn't say "or designate." And we have a really jam-up procurement department that do a tremendous job of procuring all kinds of goods throughout Marion County, and we are now spending north of six figures for another firm outside of us to facilitate when the procedure, which I'll appreciate, it's a superintendent's procedure, and it was simply on a board agenda for transparency purposes, but then when we don't follow it, and the Board has to find out in the rears about it, it feels like there's a lack of transparency. And so, again, for the purposes of moving forward with this, I agree. I will vote yes, and it is evident in the repetition of scores, which did not change very much. There was about a 30% change in scores from round one to round two, that Skanska is, is the winner of this competition, whatever interview. But my concern is that we're not following the procedures we have set in place, and this Board- we're not following the procedures we have set in place, and this board member wants to see that change. So, that is going to be my concern. Also, I feel pretty strongly that if I had not sent an email on Monday morning that said, "Please give me an update on where we are with the environmental concerns," this board would not have received that information before we were voting on this tonight, and I'm sorry, but knowing that there's a potential almost-year delay is important information for this board who likes to be informed to know about. So, that delay in information as well does not appear transparent to me. So, those are the concerns I have. The only question I have is if we are removing gopher tortoises right now, what are we doing to ensure that they don't come on back? Is there, is there something we can do to make, because it's not cheap to remove a gopher tortoise.
You're correct, and that's why it's imperative that we start construction. When a site is left unused, then it's very possible that they'll come back. And, um, Board Member James, I really believe in transparency. We did not have the schedule change. We're still getting the studies from our consultants, so we did not have a definite update, and I did not want to come here and say it's a 10-month delay when it might not be. We might be able to work around the sand skinks like I did in my previous county and the school open on time. In regards to the selection process, I must say, I have worked for school district for 30 years, and in one school district, we did record; in my last school district, we did not record. There are two statutory requirements, Two Eighty-Seven and Two Eighty-Six. Two Eighty-Seven governs professional services, which states it's a public meeting and does not have to record. Two Eighty-Six governs negotiation with a contractor, and it says that these meetings could be exempt, and if they're exempt, then they have to be recorded. I listened to the audio, and the facilitator, he did say it was an exempt meeting, and therefore, it was recorded, and therefore, we did comply with all the statutory requirements. But if there is any change in scope or change in schedule and we have a definite information, certainly let the superintendent know and we'll bring it to you. A 10-month delay, I am not certain about that. We just said that's a possibility. We're talking about staff. It's very possible we can start construction as scheduled in August if we can phase it and work around the skinks. We're currently moving the gopher tortoises. But the thing is here, because of the high cost in construction, we need to start, because then we don't want to lose this project and not be able to afford it.
So, my just last follow-up question would be, if we cannot start construction, for whatever reason, environmentally, what are we going to do to ensure the tortoises do not return?
Well, I'll have to work with the Fish and Wildlife Conservation and see what, how we can prepare the site to prevent that. Maybe we can do some type of fencing or something to keep them out.
Because it's, 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 I mean, we're 5,000-plus port, per tortoise, so we don't need to be
Correct.
Doing it twice.
That's correct.
So, that would be my hope that we can focus on if we have a delay in construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One, I'm sorry, I'm just sorry, real quick. Um, I just, and since you've worked, Ms. Usher, for a school system before, you can understand the challenges, um, the board faces when we attend community meetings and people are giving us information about our own project that we're not aware of. So, when I talk about transparency, um, and increasing communication, I, I just wanted to give an example of how that affects me personally as a board member when I'm out and about in the community, uh, and so, thank you, that, and I appreciate you, um, answering and, um, gi, um, giving discussion to us. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Usher. Welcome to Marion County Public Schools.
Thank you.
What a wonderful welcome that you received this evening. Uh, but I, I do want to say thank you for your update and for your expertise and for bringing that into our community. And just for further clarification, for the public to be aware, I have an email that was sent to all board members 10 days ago that was included in the MCPS highlights of the week that we receive from the superintendent every week. That included much of the information that we've heard this evening, inclusive of the need of archaeological study. You didn't have that information quite updated yet. We wouldn't get that for several weeks. So, while I understand that there was some concern brought forth this evening, 10 days ago, we were made aware of these issues, and so I, I don't believe that was completely transparent this evening in the way the communication has occurred. Perhaps the, the folks that are speaking had issues and altercations prior to March 15th, or perhaps they hadn't read the depth of the information that we had before us. I absolutely will be voting in favor of this. Understandably, that archaeological and environmental concerns at times can alter construction timelines. Anyone who's worked in development understands that. However, also, with your expertise and those that are working with us, this isn't their new, their, their first rodeo. This isn't a new ballgame. If you've ever built a school in the state of Florida, you've dealt with these kinds of issues, and I have full confidence that we'll get this done on time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Board Member Thrower?
Um, first, I'll say that I was reflecting back that I had heard this information and read it, uh, a while back, and so, thank you, um, Board Member Campbell for clarifying where and when that was.[932.12][932.12](laugh) And I do remember getting that email and, and reading it. Um, I wasn't all that concerned because there were gopher tortoises in the, on the high school, um, property, but the problem with that was it was wintertime and it was getting cold, and unless temperature's above 50 degrees, I believe you got a way to move them. Plus, they walk pretty slow, so I don't know if they get taken away, but I would imagine it would take them a little time to get back and give us a chance to, you know, provide some, some mitigation. Also, I didn't hear anything about scrub jays, and I think we had those on the high school property. So, hopefully, we've got, you know, that base covered. Um, I'm definitely gonna vote to move forward, obviously, because that's what's best for kids. I'm a little concerned about hearing that there was conversation in the community, um, about any of this. Cone of silence is a thing, so that is probably the most concerning piece of this whole presentation that I'm walking away with so far. I also am just looking back, um, 2002, (laugh) we had audit findings on our construction management process, and it really wasn't even a process back then. It was pencil and paper and consensus and, uh, lots of room for improvement, shall we say. So, I guess I'll just end by saying, I know we're moving in the right direction. Um, there's a lot of pressure that comes from a lot of places, but we're here to serve kids, open schools on time, help the wildlife get to where they need to go, so we can keep going with what we need to do. That's all I have. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Board Member Thrower? Anyone else? Okay, Reverend Cummings is shaking his head. All right. Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. Ms. Usher, thank you very much for presenting for us this evening. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment of Ocala Consulting and Prevention, LLC?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you, Dr. Gullett, you have some information to share with us regarding this item?
I do. Thank you, Board. Uh, this item is regarding mental health services. Ms. Delno Doble is already here at the podium, and this item is, uh, the request is $1.8 million, and, uh, is, a portion of this is required by the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School's Public Safety Act, so, um, providing those services, Ms. Delno Doble provides some additional context. Thank you.
I had a long walk, so I started early.
Yes, you did.
(laugh) Good evening, Chair Conrad, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, and Board Members. As a district, we currently partner with Ocala Consulting and Prevention, or better known as OCP. OCP is a community-based mental health services provider that delivers individualized mental health counseling services on school campuses. OCP's mental health counselors work in tandem with our school-based mental health professionals, which include our school counselors, our school social workers, and our school psychologists, to provide additional support to schools identified as having high needs. OCP counselors are able to provide onsite services to students, thus helping to mitigate some of the barriers that families encounter with regard to accessing these community-based services. Students are typically referred via the multidisciplinary team when a need of this level of mental health support is identified by school staff. We currently have 14 mental health counselors providing services on 24 campuses throughout the district, and they serve 336 students. Our MDT teams also identify students who may need ongoing support through the summer, and we have OCP counselors working along with school social workers to provide those services. For the 2526 school year, we will continue to staff 14 OCP counselors, providing services on 24 campuses, again prioritized by identified level of need. Lastly, we conduct surveys every year with our school leaders for feedback regarding these services that are provided. I'm happy to report that we typically receive overwhelming positive responses about the counselors and the services that they provide.
Thank you, Ms. Delno Doble. Um, Board, do you have any questions or concerns at this time? Okay. Thank you very much. Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to review, select, or reject offers regarding sale of central warehouse property?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett or Attorney Powers? Thank you, I got it. Doctor Attorney Powers, if you have some information you'd like to share with us.
As indicated in the best practice on board docs, the school board hired Attorney John McGraw to assist with the sale of the central warehouse property. Attorney McGraw and Attorney Alex Scales, uh, will present offers to the school board for its review and determination as to how to proceed. The board may select one of the offers or may reject all offers. Should the board accept an offer, um, the attorneys will proceed with preparing the paperwork to move forward with the sale of the central warehouse. Upon acceptance of an offer, Attorney McGraw and Attorney Scales will seek permission for the board chair to have permission to execute all documents necessary to move the transaction to closing. Okay. One of each. Yes, ma'am.
Do you need a copy? Hand me one more.
Yes.
No, that's yours. No, I need that.
There's still one. Put your hand here.
Good evening, school board members. Attorney Scales for McGraw-Ravamunarelli. Before you, you have two offers for the warehouse. One is from One Remington LLC. The offer price is for $2.4 million. This offer is on the school board, um, agreement for purchase and sale of real estate that you guys have approved in prior sales. The only change that was made to this contract was One Remington has requested a due diligence period of 30 days instead of 15 days. And then, we have a second offer from Palm Capital Partners LLC. Their offer is what, for $1.4 million. They have made no changes to the contract and have fallen within the 15-day due diligence period that was originally located within your contract.
Quick question?
Yes.
Could you clarify for me on the first contract, um, the change for, um, the time for inspection? You said from 15 days to 30 days?
From 15 to 30 days. Yes, they requested an additional 15 days to inspect the property.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Board, I open it up. Are there any questions? You want to take a minute to look it over further?
I have a question. Um, I just did a quick SunBiz, because I didn't see a printout of One Remington LLC, so they're out of New York, or?
So, they do have a Florida location for the registered agent, but their president is located in Syracuse, New York, and I know under the terms of the school board's agreement, they do have to have a, um, company that is located within Florida.
Yeah, I mean, I found them on SunBiz, so
Right.
They must have done a quick SunBiz filing or something.
They have.
Um, my only question is, 25,000 in earnest on 2.4 million feels a little light.
Well, they're actually going to put 75 in after the due diligence expiration, so it will be 100 total.
Okay.
So, it's 25 initial.
Okay.
And after due diligence expiration, they'll put another 75 in for a total.
And then, what's the, what's the term for closing?
Well, one of them has, I believe, a closing date in it specified, and the other is going to have a 30 days after expiration of due diligence period.
We're to 60 days to close.
30 days and then another 30, correct. 60 days to close.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'm going to ask if you guys could both, when you're speaking, make sure to speak into the mic for me, please. Thank you.
And just for a point of clarification, is the title and closing happening at your office, Mr. McGraw?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, is that fee included in the fee that we're paying you for your services, or is that an additional closing fee?
That would be included in the services.
Okay.
Well, to be clear, the, there would be a title insurance premium. It would be in addition to the hourly rate.
That's the answer I was looking for. Okay. So, we're going to have separate, separate fees for closing?
Correct.
Okay. Can you remind us what that closing cost is going to be? It's, it's based on price, correct?
It, it is. It's a promulgated rate, uh, based on Florida Insurance Commissioner's rates, and I don't have the exact rate off the top of my head.
Okay.
Is it a certain percentage?
It's probab, yes, it is a percentage.
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be
What percentage?
A decent amount of money.
Um, yeah, I would say it's somewhere around $4,000.
Okay. And then, what's the percentage we are doing for the, the realtors?
The realtors were at, um, I believe it was 3% because they took a reduced, um, rate. Aaron and Zandon took a reduced fee.
Yeah. I'm just trying to backwards into how much we're going to walk away with, so if you have that number handy, that's great, but
Let me try, I'll try to do some
You could do some rough math real quick. I'm just trying to figure out on, I mean, obviously, for me personally, the 2.4 offer is more palatable, um, than the 1.4. I feel like getting an extra million dollars would be a good thing, um, so I'm just trying to understand what we'll walk away from the deal with, is all, so.
Yeah. I'll do some calculation on that.
I'm seeing a commission of like 72,000 probably, if we're at 3%. And then, in it, you know, if we just rounded up, we're looking at, you know, about 75, 80,000 dollars less.
That would be correct, and just to be clear, the school board would not be paying for any of the documentary stamps, which are a significant cost for a $2.4 million deal or a $1.4 million deal. That is going to be on the buyer, so the school board will not be responsible for those costs that are typically placed on the seller.
Yes. Board Member Thrower?
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your great work on this so far. Um, I'm just kind of interested to hear your thoughts on 1.4 million, it's a 15-day due diligence, and on 2.4 million, it's 30. It's, you know, it's like, why?
Yeah, that's a big swing. Um, I would obviously give you the advice to move forward with a 2-point, uh, $2 million deal with a 30-day due diligence over the 1.4.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, well, yes, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Based on the prior conversations and whenever we just had put this out the first time without actually having a Realtor and all, the 2.4 million is higher than anything we had seen, uh, from the closed bid process and, and all of that, so Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the agreement for purchase and sale of the real estate from One Remington LLC for $2.4 million.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
The Board, if we may, if there are any additional issues that One Remington has moving forward, is it acceptable if Mrs. Conrad works as the chairperson with Mr. Powers, if he reviews any changes that they request? And if Mr. Powers gives Ms. Conrad the go-ahead, does she have full power to sign off on those changes?
I would say that those changes would, the only changes that I wouldn't bring back to the board are if they're non-substantive. If the changes are ones that are a matter of, um, changing a, a date by, by a date certain, or, you know, some small, um, matter like that, that's within the discretion of the attorneys, then I would, I would bring that to the chair. If it was anything that, uh, had a substantial impact or altered, um, significantly, anything about what we're talking about here, then I would only be comfortable bringing it back to the board.
Are we in consensus on that?
Well, I actually have a counter-recommendation, if that's okay, just for the ease of the work, because they may find something that's not incredibly substantial costing, and when this is a significant offer, that's much higher than our previous offer. I mean, I, this board member would be comfortable setting like a threshold of, I don't know, $50,000 or something, so that if it's a, so that we don't have to come back to a meeting to have another discussion, and if, if we're willing to give the chair some level of discretion And if Mr. Powers gives Ms. Conrad the go-ahead, does she have full power to sign off on those changes?
I would say that those changes would, the only changes that I wouldn't bring back to the board are if they're non-substantive. If the changes are ones that are a matter of changing a date by a date certain, or, you know, some small matter like that, that's within the discretion of the attorneys, then I would bring that to the chair. If it was anything that had a substantial impact or altered significantly, anything about what we're talking about here, then I would only be comfortable bringing it back to the board.
Are we in consensus on that?
Well, I actually have a counter recommendation, if that's okay, just for the ease of the work, because they may find something that's not incredibly substantial costing, and this is a significant offer that's much higher than our previous offer. I mean, this board member would be comfortable setting like a threshold of, I don't know, $50,000 or something, so that if it's a, so that we don't have to come back to a meeting to have another discussion. And if we're willing to give the chair some level of discretion to say, okay, we can do something up to X amount of dollars, just so if it's a small amount, she could just take care of it. But that would be my counter argument, I guess. I don't know.
And I would expect that most of those things aren't actually going to be monetarily based. They're terms-based. Like one, on our previous one, it had to do with mineral rights.
Yeah, it was just a signature. A signature or a date is basically what we're talking about, yeah.
I was just expanding so that if it's monetarily attached, maybe we could give her some leverage to make a decision, is all. But I'm cool either way.
Board Member Thrower.
Yes, you know, the basics, simple things, no big deal at all, but this board is not afraid to have a quick special meeting if it's something substantial, and I'm going to put the trust in our school board attorney in you to decide what that would be.
If it's something that's going to give me heartburn, I will definitely call it.
Me too, me too.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
All right, thank you. Okay, board, there's a special board meeting on...
Attorney McGraw, do you need signatures tonight, or do you need signatures on anything tonight? Okay. Just want to check before we... Go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay, sorry. I didn't see you in my peripheral vision that you were needed to speak, so I apologize. There's a school board meeting on April 3, 2025 at 7:00 a.m., followed by an administrative briefing and work session at 9:00 a.m. The next school board meeting is scheduled for April 8, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. And at this time, I'll take board comments. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items. I just, what a provide clarification to the item you all just spoke about with construction services for middle school DD. I will follow up with Attorney Powers, your school board attorney, I think, because you issued the cone of silence guidance on that, right? I think?
I've issued no guidance at all on that.
We got nothing.
Oh, okay. Nothing on...
No information.
No information on cone of silence for that project? That doesn't come from you? Okay. So I'll follow up. We'll talk, and I'll just make sure that there's a follow-up to that. Also wanted to share, as you all know, tomorrow is early release day for two hours for our students, and so, and tonight is Barb Dobbins. Speaking of operations and construction and all of that, Barb Dobbins, this is your last school board meeting after working for the district for decades. So she's smiling broadly out there because she's retiring, but has great things ahead, and just want to thank you publicly. This is your last board meeting, we'll be celebrating with you later this week. But board, I just wanted to recognize her work and her leadership for our students.
Ms. Dobbins, will you stand up and tell us how many years of service you have with Marion County Public Schools?
You're not allowed to dance.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. And last but not least, because we always start with students and end with students, I want to thank the Marion County Cultural Alliance today. One of the school visits I had the opportunity to engage with was a thank you as of a gift. They do incredible things for our students, and today they gifted one of our TakeStock students with a flute. She will be playing the flute at the University of Florida, and really excited about providing opportunities to students that don't have access to the equipment that they need to thrive. And so really want to thank them and all the benefactors that support our students in Marion County. Thank you so much.
Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, let's go to our student representatives. We'll let you go first.
Um, yes, I just want to go back to 19.6, which we did discuss in our meeting today on mental health. I like to consider myself as an advocate in my school among mental health and how important it is to have teachers and staff members who are trained and equipped with dealing with mental health. It is such an important necessity, I believe, in within all schools, especially with the increased demand for tier-three mental health interventions. And to have something like this where our school board is truly prioritizing our students above all else, I am so happy to see this within our schools.
Thank you.
Going to discussion, 19.5 about middle school DD. Um, me, I was formerly a student at Lakewood Middle School, and my little sister currently attends Lakewood Middle School as a sixth-grade student. So really hearing that new middle school is coming to our county, or that's replacing Lakewood Middle School is great. And I wanted to say thank you for that, and thank you for having me here today.
Thank you both. We really appreciate your insight and your input. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you again. Dr. Campbell.
Sure, thank you. I'll also say welcome to Khalil, and always good to have you back with us. Ms. Diaz as well. For those in the community who may not be fully aware, a year ago, the school board did enact policy for us to have student representatives from the board, and so we have one each quarter from each school, two each quarter, but one from each high school. And because the students in the second quarter get short-changed their meetings, because we only have one board meeting in November and one board meeting in December, they kind of get short-changed. And so I'm grateful that we're bringing those quarter-two students back to join Khalil here at our board meeting. So you'll see another board member as well, student board member, but always grateful to have your insights and perspective. As long as we're keeping students the focus of everything we do, then we'll definitely succeed, because we want to help every student succeed. A couple of things that were brought forth tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you to Ms. Barb Dobbins. You're not allowed to dance. You're not allowed to dance yet. I was, you're back there almost doing a jig, is so excited. This is your last board meeting, but I know you were grateful you didn't have to address us this evening, so, but very, very grateful for the work that you have done in this district. I've only been a part of it for four and a half years, but knowing the legacy that you've left, you have a lot to be proud of. So you've had your fingers on not just schools, but many different departments in this district that have all been better because you've been there. So thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Also wanted to mention, because we had several community members speaking tonight, wanted to mention just a bit, a lot of focus certainly has been on closing of one particular school, but I want to continue to say, the thought process behind that is not because of that school. It's because the school up the road, Reddick Collier, is operating at 50% capacity. That is the reason that this even came forth, from this board member's perspective. We don't have a solution for a school that is 100 years newer than Pheasanton, essentially built in the 90s. And that doesn't sound like a very new school. It does, and built in the 90s, but we haven't built a school here in 20 years. So a school built in the 90s is actually new to Marion County Public Schools, apart from the two new schools we're about to open this year. So when we have a newer school built in the 90s that is operating at 50% capacity, that also operates in the current, as we know, farmland preservation area, the whole zone, unless something changes in state statute this next year, I'll just leave that out there. Right now, the way our county has set up the urban growth boundary and the comprehensive plan, there's not a lot of opportunity for growth. And again, Reddick Collier is operating at 50% capacity. So this board has to have real hard conversations about what solutions are for that. There have been solutions that have been posed as questions, but similarly to the way this board had very dedicated conversations to a combination of 8th Street and Osceola. We had a lot of folks come to us a year, year and a half, two years ago, thinking that was a done deal, just because this board had started having a conversation. And clearly, it wasn't a done deal, because it didn't get done. It didn't combine, we heard community outcry, and that wasn't something that happened. But the only way the five people up here can have conversation is to do it right here in the public. We can't have conversation behind closed doors. We can't go out and seek somebody else's thoughts, or ask somebody, "Did you talk to another board member? Tell me what they said." We can't do that. That's against the law. So we want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and getting the community feedback. I want to speak to the communication timeline on the meetings this week, because I want to say, goal five of our strategic plan, and the conversation that has happened tonight continues to highlight the significant communication challenges we have within this district. And that includes internal departments. If we have something as important as community input that this board asked for very diligently, and it's planned in one department, and another department creates the flyer, and another department that needs to get it on the website doesn't do so, and another department that sends out the Skylark, and then we find out about it in an email, that is internal communication that is not working. I know that. I'm a communication professional, and I know that. It is completely unacceptable, and I cannot, as a board member, continue to stand by, knowing that goal five of our strategic plan that we put into place four and a half years ago is the worst outcome that we have of any goals in our strategic plan. We cannot continue to do it. Dr. Gullett, I don't know what it's going to take to change it, but before you leave, I hope we have some change, because it continues to be a challenge. We had multiple community members tonight addressing it, but from this board seat, I'm done. I am done. So all of the departments internally that work on communications, y'all got to get your acts together. Okay, moving on. The last thing I wanted to mention today was, I had an opportunity yesterday to watch back our meeting yesterday, because I needed to process a bit of what we talked about. And I'm not going to talk about that, because we've set another agenda item to talk about that in the future, though the community certainly has been talking. I went out to social media, as Dr. James was mentioning yesterday. I've seen a lot of talk on social media. There's a lot. A lot of people have a lot of perspectives. It's kind of interesting. But what I want to say about watching back our meeting yesterday on YouTube, actually, my husband walked in the room, so we both had the same thought, because he couldn't believe it. Chair, I want to ask what our update is on our stage remodel, because the wrinkled tablecloths that we have as our dais continues to make this school board look like the Little Sisters of the Poor. You watch it back? You watch it back? We were on a wide shot the entire meeting yesterday for two hours, and all you see are wrinkles all along this table. What in the world are we trying to do? These black boxes that are all scratched up and not, we don't look like the professionalism we want our educators to have in the classrooms, and we need to fix it. So Chair, I was wondering if we had an update on that, and I would appreciate it.
We, I don't have an update for you, but it is on my list for my one-on-one with my next one-on-one with Dr. Gullett, so I'll have an update for you soon, unless, Ms. Dobbins, if you have, I don't know if you have an update that you'd like to share with the board, not to put you on the spot.
No, I'll put her on the spot. It's her last meeting. Come on, we wanted to hear from you. Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Good evening. Happy to be here to discuss it, and, you know, it's coincidental, because Yvonne came to me just today, and our new design coordinator, who just recently started, had mocked up some options for us, and it looks, it looks great. I'm very proud of what that team has developed. What I asked her to do is then turn it over to Mr. Duncan and our maintenance department to cost out what the furniture building would do. But essentially, what we're talking about is removing some of the chairs here on my right and left in the front, and building a low platform to where we then would have customized furniture for you, everyone that's on the board that would be able to be moved and pushed up to the stage if there's an event going on on the stage. And then it would have a removable, portable background that you then would see when you're televised. It will take coordination, of course, with the audio and visual portion of it. So we've yet to, because it's just hot off the press, we've yet to work with Kevin's group and also work with the county on how they do theirs as well. So it's moving along. We had to wait for our design coordinator to get on board, and she has sketched out a beautiful design. It's in pricing, and we need to work with audiovisual as well, and then it'll be brought to you in a work session for you to review and make decisions, because we then have to talk about the funding source for it as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dobbins. I know you've been working on that for a little bit, so, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James?
Thank you. Thank you for that stage update. It's good to get that. I did want to give Ms. Dobbins a, well, a couple things. We're celebrating her on Friday in her service. Before the meeting, we were discussing, those who've been in the district a while, Ms. Dobbins has worked in just about every single department, except CFO, because Ms. Boston Ellis has probably been around longer and in that department longer. But Ms. Dobbins has served in a significant amount of capacities and has really had impact in a variety of roles. I did want to mention, she did send an email, well, Attorney Powers via Ms. Dobbins sent an email on 12/20 about a cone of silence. That email did come. I think if I were to put my perception on it, I think the cone of silence started in 12/20, and we're at the end of March, and so understanding the processes that were in play, and then making sure that we felt confident in our procedural manual being implemented were some of the shortcomings. And so, but I wanted to acknowledge that facilities did send that email out on 12/20. We had a parent or guardian or community member tonight share concerns about the Department of Education, and I have renewed confidence that in addressing some of the bloating we have at the Department of Education, we'll allow more money to come to the local counties and to the state government. That is my confidence. I saw a comparison today that said, the DOE was like Ticketmaster. You can pay the person directly for the ticket to the concert, or you can pay Ticketmaster, and they're going to add a fee. And there was money getting taken off the top federally at the DOE, and I have confidence that we're going to see that money now come directly to our students. That is certainly my expectation as an elected official in this community, that we are going to continue to meet all of our students' needs and have more funding to do so. I would like to see, we did some expulsions tonight. I've seen some conversation online. There was a conversation recently about, you know, how we really expelled over 100 students at Westport this year. Well, when you do the math, that's only 3%, because we got almost 3,000 students at Westport, and 3% is actually not an incredibly inflated number when you look across at expulsion rates. But I want to see a conversation this board engage back in regarding our most egregious offenders and where they go. I think sending kids to their house is not the best place for kids. And I want to see us re-engage, I'm going to put the terminology wrong, but put out a RFQ, put out a bid, whatever that looks like, to engage our community partners to see who would be interested in providing services for our most egregious offenders face-to-face. I do not think sending them home and then expecting them to return to base, ready to rock and roll, a year later, is putting them in a most advantageous position. So I would be interested in engaging in discourse as to ways to improve our most egregious offenders consequences, so that they receive face-to-face instruction on a daily basis from a human being who is not only going to deliver them instruction, but also provide remediation and rehabilitation for the human being. Because what I see Ronnie Jones doing on this campus is remediation and rehabilitation, and he is truly course-correcting many students and helping them find ways to make better decisions so that they don't land back here. But our most egregious offenders can't be here. If they've, I mean, we had maybe six or seven tonight that we sent to virtual learning because they offended here. And then we had a couple that it was like their fourth offense at their base school, so they got to skip here and go straight home. And I can understand that they can't be here, because this is not the right place for them, but their home with no supervision is not the right place for them either. And so I want to see us engage in some discussions about that, board. We're going to quickly approach a critical time like we did last year, where we're going to miss the opportunity to do something different, and I don't know that I want to let that go, and then we're just keep doing the same thing. Because the data will support, those kids are going to come back from home, and they're going to re-offend at base, and they're going to wind up right back there again. And that's not what's best for kids. And finally, I want to just highlight a couple things. I, community, I appreciate you coming out tonight to share your thoughts. This board came to consensus that we were... This board came to consensus that we were going to address Pheasant and Anthony no sooner than the 26-27 school year. So we came to consensus on that as a board and we said that this was not about next school year, but that when Mr. Ayers comes before the board in January and talks about rezoning, that's for 18 months away as a very proactive measure. So the adjustment to Pheasant and Anthony was for 26-27 at the earliest. Now, regarding a community meeting, same as you, very shocked. I got an email yesterday, I think yesterday, I got an email yesterday afternoon. However, when I got into the nitty-gritty of it, the date for the meeting was not approved until the Wednesday before spring break. So the staff members in charge of approving a meeting can't communicate that information if the information is not approved until the Wednesday before spring break. So I 1,000% agree with you. A 24-48 hour notice is not ideal at all. And to be honest, if we do the meetings, we're going to just have to redo them because they're not going to be effective because the people who need and desire and want to attend are not going to be there. So that is my first point of just measure is that, and by the way, there were other dates that were provided that would have been way more long-range and way more appropriate, but the date was, the dates that were chosen were these dates. So when that happens, staff then has to pivot and make a flyer and do all the things and then we're sending out a Skylert on a Thursday afternoon and then here we are, the flyer doesn't actually go home until today. And I totally agree. Why are we doing the meetings? I was confused when I read it and it said North Marion Middle and North Marion High, maybe because they have an auditorium or a gymnasium, but Pheasant has a gymnasium that can seat plenty of people. So I don't know why, other than like an auditory component, why we wouldn't, but Pheasant holds all kinds of events. I was just there for a Black History event. I don't know, what was that, less than a month ago? So I don't know why we couldn't hold it at Pheasant. And Anthony's cafeteria was, has a stage, it was an auditorium, so, or a gym. And so I don't know why those two places would not have been chosen. So my recommendation, Board, I am not a fan of canceling anything late because then the people didn't get the message and then they'll still show up and then you do it wrong then too. So what I would say is, we proceed and then we repeat. That would be my recommendation. Because canceling it is not going to put us in a position where we're effectively communicating. So, because there will be people who show up tomorrow night because they missed this memo. And the last thing I want is people to show up to a meeting that we're supposed to all be at and then people aren't there. So I would like to have the meeting and then I would like, in my opinion, no less than like three weeks awareness so that people can adjust their schedules accordingly. And then we repeat the meetings. And my understanding is the meeting is simply to share facilities and facility improvements and enrollment and have a discussion about the state of the facilities. And then in a further meeting, we'll have discussion about what would be next. And so I, that would be my recommendation, Board. Certainly, I guess it's up to Dr. Gullett, but that would be my recommendation as the board member who sits in that area and in that community. So with that, I think I conclude my comments.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. To our board members, our student board members, welcome for to be up here with us on tonight. And we look forward to the input that you guys are going to bring to these conversations. To Ms. Dobbins, thank you, Ms. Dobbins, for all of the many years and commitment and sacrifices that you've made in serving Marion County Public Schools system. I appreciate everything that you've done and I hope you have a good next chapter. Good next chapter. Ms. Usher, you just got to taste the Marion County School Board tonight at its best. So, welcome. I'll just say it that way, welcome. Tonight, we heard, we heard some comments from our community. And I went back and I was listening to, I've been listening to the whole meeting and there's two words that jumped out at me tonight that I've heard, one word I've heard eight times tonight, and that word is transparency. We, I said it first in our commitment statement because it says, "Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible." After that, after that one time I said, I heard every board member up here said it except for Ms. Throer. Every board member said that, that word, transparency. Somebody said it more than once, transparent or transparency. Some of us said it more than once tonight. And then the other word that I was looking at tonight was community. Community. And I looked at the flyer that we received on yesterday and that word, community, shows up on that flyer seven times. Seven times. So that means that these meetings that were scheduled are supposed to be for the community, for the school district. And I have to say that we have not been transparent in how this was communicated to the community. And we have not been responsible, not jumping on anybody or any department or anything like that, but there is a, there is definitely some issue with the communication in how this flyer got out and how this information is supposed to be disseminated to the community in being transparent. A Skylert is not a mode of communicating to the community. Everybody does not have, receives Skylerts. The community as a whole does not receive Skylerts. If you're a parent or a professional within the district, yes, you may receive a Skylert. But if you're not a parent and you're not attached to the school district or school system, you would not receive a Skylert. To receive a Skylert on the day of spring break, the day of the releasing for spring break in the afternoon is not fair to the community. Furthermore, the group that we're trying to get to come to this meeting is in a very large rural part of our county. A rural part of our county that don't even have internet. And so we're saying that we want to have community input, yet we have not did the work to make sure that we get the community to come. I'm bothered, I'm more than bothered. The word I want to say, I can't say it. Because this is not the first time that this has come forth. Just last summer, when we were communicating the issue about moving to year-round school with Wyamina Park, we had the same, same issue.
Yep.
Same issue. I promise y'all, I promise my folk, I will not cuss, but I feel like cursing. Because it's that serious that we are not communicating to communities and it seems like to me, the communities that get left out are the disenfranchised communities, the communities that look like me, the communities where the students look like me. And it's unfortunate that we don't have enough, it's unfortunate that we're even having this conversation. So I'm going to say, and I've heard, I've heard my board members say what they said, I'm going to say that this needs to be a reset, a huge reset. Because you cannot have a conversation about Anthony, Spar, Reddick, or Pheasant without having the conversation with the stakeholders. You cannot have a conversation about those schools. And the flyer says that it's about the North End Elementary Schools. Well, if they're not there, who are we talking to? And what are we talking about? Because it tells me that, that this group, it gives the perception that decisions have already been made. It gives the perception that no matter what's being said by the community, that that is not valuable. And we need to make sure that any conversation, whether it be this year or 26-27, that the community is involved in this conversation. You have parents, you have property owners, you have a lot of stakeholders, you have alumni associations, and we see them here tonight. We have, you have people that have been attached to these schools for decades. We've heard it. We've heard it tonight. So we need to make sure that we do what, I don't, and I don't know who does this communication piece, it really doesn't matter. I just pray that we get it right going forward and making sure that this information gets disseminated to the right, the right way, to the right people and that you can have engagement. You can't say you want a flyer, say you want community engagement and the community ain't there. It just doesn't make sense to me. So we've heard some, we've heard some impassioned comments tonight from the community. I thank you all for coming tonight, to be honest with you. It's unfortunate that you had to be here to even address this issue. But we as a board, we as a district, we owe the community much better than what we've given them. Much better than what we've given them. So I'm just going to say, I want to close with this. We got to do a better job. We have to do a better job. The other part of that, that statement that I read tonight, the last part of that, three most important characteristics, individually responsible. So I have to take some responsibility on this. And every one of us five have to take some responsibility of this because we are the board that they elected to do the right thing.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Board Member Throer?
Thank you, and thank you to the community and everyone that came out tonight. Maybe the reason you didn't hear me say transparent tonight is because I wasn't feeling it. When a school is already on the National Register of Historic Places, that means it's already been recognized as being something incredibly special. And I don't understand why this is so complicated. The problem is chronic low enrollment at Reddick. That's the problem. I don't think we have a problem with enrollment at Anthony or Pheasantin. We have a problem in Reddick. And problems wouldn't be problems if they didn't have solutions. So I think it's high time for this board to shift the conversation, get our heads together, and involve in the community of what can we do to solve the problem where it is. And it's not in Pheasantin and it's not in Anthony. The next thing I'll say is that there are still a lot of apartments being built in the area, not that far from Pheasantin and not really that much further than Reddick. So the area is continuing to grow. It's a conversation for another day to talk about opportunities for Reddick. It has its own appeal as a community and it certainly has its own proud history that we can work to cultivate and celebrate, in my opinion. I have no interest in attending any community meeting because I don't support what's been talked about, what's been proposed. So I have my same confusion as other board members spoke about, you know, just finding out last night. And I was like, this is ridiculous. This is nonsense. And no, I'm not going. So if you don't see me there tomorrow night, that's why. You won't see me there tomorrow night or the next night. I agree with Board Member Cummings, it's time for a complete reset. We have accomplished a lot of goals in our strategic plan. We've come a long way in so many areas, but the communication piece is one that, you know, no point beating it anymore to death. We've just got to do better. So I'm looking forward to, it was already said tonight that this wouldn't get talked about until 26-27, so you know, the teachers and staff and principals at Anthony and Pheasantin that have been thrown into such a tailspin these last weeks, but that's not good enough for me. I really would like to see some strong consensus and leadership from this board that we are going to focus on the area of concern, which is Reddick. I don't know if the board is prepared, you know, to make that commitment tonight or not, but that's exactly where I sit with this.
Oh, yes, sorry. Dr. Campbell?
I'll be happy to have that conversation and I completely agree. Reddick is our problem. That is low enrollment. That's what I said tonight. To address that issue, we have put magnet opportunities there already with very low applicants, as we saw in the recent information we received. The only fix that I see today, if we were to get real down to brass tacks is is that we rezone and move some of the kids to Reddick that are currently zoned for other schools. And that's honestly the only way we are going to infill that school, that I see. Perhaps you guys see something else. But we are overcrowded in Pheasantin. We are. And so if we infilled with some of those students, that would be a whole nother rezoning conversation that I think might be one of the opportunities that Mr. Ayers presents to us so we can have that conversation for 26-27. But that's the only other solution that I know at this point, but I am open to conversation.
Madam Chair, we, and I know people could say that, that because of the farm preservation area, that there's little growth on that side. That's not necessarily so. When you look at Pine Oaks Golf Course, where they just built all those apartments, when you look at 326 and there's stuff going up there on 326, there is growth coming in that area.
That's within the boundary.
Yeah, that's within the boundary, but those kids got to go somewhere. They can't go to Fordham because that's an early learning school. They can't go to Oak Crest. They can't go to either one of those schools. They're not going to Ocala Springs.
They're already zoned for somewhere. I don't know which, I would have to pull up the map.
But as you, again, you just said, Pheasant is full and is at capacity, so there's more coming. So we got to look at, again, truly, where are we going to send these kids? You have kids that's all the way out there in Morriston that come to Pheasantin. You got kids that's on the line, on property, on the county line that comes to Pheasantin. We got to look at not closing the school, but readjusting some things to make sure it fits for all the schools. And when we do that, then we will solve the problem. But we can't create a problem to solve a problem. And it seems like that's what we're trying to do, is create a problem to solve a problem.
I really appreciate the conversation. You know, we have very concerned citizens that are coming back, you know, week after week. And at some point, you know, this board has to be definite, you know? And I am definite that Pheasantin will remain and that Anthony needs to remain as well. I think about the trailer park that's across from there. You know, we're talking about people where it's just not that easy to go here, go there, go everywhere, you know? And there are many things that have been lost through the years because of kind of knee-jerk, short-sighted, not visionary thinking. So let's learn from those mistakes and rededicate ourselves. You know, we've done a pretty good job, I think, as a board, you know, working with the community and reaching in. So let's not blow it now. So, yeah, that's, I guess that's all I'll say for tonight and I appreciate some of the conversation that's already been had. It seemed like a pretty quick rezoning to zone those kids right out of NH Jones into other places years ago, that they couldn't even go to their neighborhood's school. What is that? That was, that was the desegregation order.
That was out of our control.
It was out of our control, but it happened and it took a long time to fix it.
It did not change until I got on the board.
That's right.
And that was years and they should not have taken that.
We were out from under that for a long time before that conversation happened. So, you know, it's old wounds, right? And it's hard to talk about. But the things that are the hardest to talk about are probably the things that need to be talked about the most.
That's right.
You know, it just is what it is. And all we can do is, you know, is do better. When you know better, you do better. And you learn and you go and experience these places and you get to feel the heartbeat, you get to hear the whisperings. You get to hear the whisperings in the walls, so to speak. And hopefully, it changes minds and hearts, and we do better. And I also know that we have programs that are at all clear other ends of the county. You know, there's people that have been... Kids that have been going to IB programs and all kinds of, you know, programs that have come from long distances to do things. So, where there is commitment and the right spirit, you find a way to get things done. So... I'm not gonna continue to belabor the point. What I do want to move on and say is, Ms. Diaz, I think you need to know that when we went up to Tallahassee, we spoke of you specifically as a student board member and how important mental health is and how you raised awareness to us. We obviously were aware. But this is the beauty of having student board members. Because it resonates with us and then we take it forward and we take it up the chain. And they are listening. They are hearing. So, please know that by your participation and others, student board members, you're making a difference. Okay? Thank you. Couple things. The statement on what's going on with the Department of Education, you know, right now, it's all in flux. But I think I do know that this board and superintendent and staff are committed to serving each and every child. So, as this continues to unfold, it's uncertain. And when things are uncertain, it's scary. But there is also laws in place to protect kids with disabilities and with IEPs for them to get what they need. And I feel pretty confident that this board is gonna continue to advocate and fight and do what needs to be done. It's easy to get upset about it and nervous because there's just no concrete answers yet. But as they begin to come out, you know, we'll hopefully do a really good job of communicating them. All right. I wanna share that the Black Stallion Reading Project is beginning again. And that is sponsored by the Ocala Horse Alignment Alliance, led by Ellie Truman. And it is a fantastic group that donates over 3,000 books every year, reading the book, The Black Stallion. It is a well-loved project. And I'll be helping put the book plates on for the Farm Partners on 3,000 books this Thursday and Friday. So, if you want to help... Yep. Okay, so you guys have been made aware. That's a great one. And then, they'll be bringing horses around to the elementary schools and talking about all the different careers and just being very encouraging. It's just a wonderful gem of a program and it's been around a long time with Marion County Public Schools. Went to thank a teacher today at Vanguard High School, which is in my district, Ms. Sensible. She's a math teacher. You can just tell by walking in there, you know, how amazing she is. And the kids really do care about her and they're learning a lot. So, it's fun to thank a teacher. And that's a partnership with HCA Florida, great community partner. I'm using a Fort King pen tonight, and Fort King is also in my district. And the Falcons are on the rise. They have a new AI program that's gonna start next year. And the principal reached out to me and he said, because he knows I like good news and who doesn't like good news? I think they've already accepted 32 students and a couple of them are starting early. So, we've got amazing kids that are just so smart and so capable. And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for all of the programs that you have encouraged with your staff to grow and pipelines to make kids interested in school and start finding things that they might wanna do in life. I also wanted to finally share that a young man named Austin, I had occasion to be at the Permitting and Licensing Department of Marion County, the county, earlier this week. And a young man named Austin took care of me. And he's a permitting and licensing technician. And he's a graduate, proud graduate of Forest High School, young man. Very capable, you know, answered all my questions, gave me what I needed. And it just made me feel so good. It's like, you know, these are our kids and they graduate from our schools and they go out and they get jobs and just now being of service, you know, to someone that's an adult like me. So, pretty neat. Just I'll end by saying, thank you all again for being here. And don't lose the faith, you know, keep the faith. From hard times come better tomorrows.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. And you guys have just about covered my list. So, I do have a couple of comments. Another community member spoke, I guess, I believe it's for the second time, about report cards and when those are sent home. And I just wanted to remind the community that all of that is available online through their portal. You know, parents, students can look at their grades every day if they want to. When I taught fourth grade, that was, we did it once a week. We got on, we checked to see if they were missing assignments. They log in themselves, they check their grades. All of that is available online. They can do it at school or at home, on their phone. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that in case there was someone that was not aware of that. And Reverend Chandler did talk a lot about communication. I agree, I'm not gonna really spend a lot of time, but I agree with what was... The board has shared. We have to be... We just have to plan ahead better. And we have to be considerate of those that we are serving and the needs of those that we are serving. So, I will leave that there. I also wanted to... I forgot to thank on item 19.6, Ms. Del Nodel. I forgot to say thank you because I can't see if she's still here. She's gone. I just wanted to tell her thank you because I did have quite a few questions about that item and she spent quite a bit of time going through it with me. And so, I forgot to thank her when she was presenting. So, I wanted to be sure and say that. Attorney Powers, I just had a quick question. I've been in conversation with you and Ms. Boston Ellis. Do we have a timeline that we have to turn in our sales tax committee names? I don't know. I know that we're up against a timeline. I just wanna make sure that I can help the board in getting that completed.
I have gotten all except two names that I am awaiting and I've reached out. So, as soon as I have those, I've prepared everything else that we need. And the board asked for me to send a list to all board members. I haven't yet sent it because I am waiting on those last two names.
Okay.
As soon as I have those, I'll circulate that. And then, we will be setting our sales tax committee meeting. So, I would anticipate that that should come this week.
Very good. Thank you very much, Attorney Powers. And is Boston Ellis, am I correct in that that has to be turned into the state? Yes, okay, thank you. I just...
So, he will get those names. I'm the two names. He didn't say it. I'll say it. Listen, transparency, accountability. So, I did get some names today that you'll get.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. I appreciate that. Oh, I wanted to say thank you to the Public Ed Foundation. They had a bowling event the Thursday evening before spring break. And it was a phenomenal event for our staff. And during the school year, there's just not a lot of opportunity. I actually can't... I can't think of another opportunity where any teacher, any principal from across the district gets to gather in one place and be in fellowship with one another with no training, no agenda, except for to come, have a good time, and enjoy each other's company. So, that was a really great time. I don't know how they can make it any better because it was a phenomenal event. And hats off for all the work that went into that. Right along with that, we had breakfast with the superintendent on the teacher workday. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Gullett. She always makes it a priority to show up for that event with our Golden Apple teachers. And it truly is a safe space for teachers to come and share challenges that they're facing, either in their classroom, at their school, within the community. And so, she always provides that opportunity to listen and allow some problem solving to take place. So, Dr. Gullett, again, we thank you for your commitment to taking time to spend with the foundation on that. With that, I'm gonna finish up with a quick apology to the Facilities Department about the cone of silence. There is an email. I was trying. I'm not as... I'm not so good at multitasking when I'm running a meeting. So, you don't see me on the computer too much usually. But there is an email from December 19th, I do believe. And so, I do think that three months is a long time. For the cone is almost three months for a cone of silence to be in effect. I see Dr. Campbell kind of shrugging her shoulders, but I'm just sharing how I feel. I think that's a long time. But regardless of that, I wanna thank you for sending that out and apologize for saying that it wasn't sent out. And so, I just wanted to state that publicly. And so, with that, if there is any further discussion, I will have to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower, and thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:47. Thank you.